No, go, no.
Let me do a green sheet.
Mayor and Council, we are, I believe, unless there are any public speakers who did not see their time to Mr. Lewis, we are at the conclusion of the public portion of the hearing. And then you would ask if there is any staff or applicant rebuttal.
Is there any staff or applicant rebuttal?
Is there any staff rebuttal? I see Mr. Fegan stepping up, so.
Can I ask a question before a motion is made? Okay. Is it safe to assume that you and Attorney Therac have conferred and talked about the...
No. Mr. Therac and Mr. Spain, who's on the record, represent staff in the review, so with respect to any questions about the application, any issues, deficiencies with the application, Mr. Spain is available, he's listening, and he would be able to answer those issues. For purposes of the hearing, I am representing the council just to make sure.
So you feel confident in the, if we would happen to approve this zoning request?
It's not up to me to feel confident. All it is, is indicate whether or not the procedures to get it to you have been followed, and I am confident that they have been followed.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think what you're saying, Derek, is can you, based on your expert legal opinion, based on what you heard today, in the limited bit that you've been available to go through, do you still have the same confidence you had in the staff report to begin with?
I don't have an opinion on the staff report at all. What I will opine is that in my 15 years of sitting in quasi judicial boards with various cities and counties, the process is, if there are, I'm speaking mainly to Mr. Lewis's arguments, if there are deficiencies in the application, those deficiencies get reviewed during the application process. If during the zoning board or during the first reading additional deficiencies come up, that's the purpose of having the multiple hearings, to address those items, to say that, you know, at the 11th hour, there's an issue with Scribner's error, some other issue, and you have to go straight back to square one, but quite frankly, actually be contrary to Chapter 166 Florida statutes, which requires that when an application for development order or development permit, especially when that goes to a quasi judicial body moves forward, that it moves forward within a timeframe of six months. And so, you know, that's a, reading those things together, I would say that yes, you followed the process. The deficiencies that Mr. Lewis raised at the first reading were addressed by the applicant. I would assume that he would prefer those to be addressed, and his client would prefer that he have more information about the project than less information. So yes, I feel, that's my, that's my opinion on what I believe you're asking me.
That works. That's as good as we're gonna get for an answer, but I like it.
That's as good as you're gonna get from me. Thank you.
Yes, Mike.
Good afternoon, or good evening. Mike Fegan, Community Development for the Record. I'll keep my responses pretty brief, and then I'll turn it over to the applicant to also provide their responses as well. One thing to keep in mind is that the detached villa and the definition contained, if you were to approve it, it's specific to this project and this project only. Now, there was a request by the zoning board, because they did like the definition and the concept, and it's in your green sheet, that if you thought that it was something that spurred the need to amend the land development code, to go ahead and add something like this in there, we're open to suggestions to be able to do that.
Not at this time.
That's fine. But the point being is that this definition and this plan is specific to this project only.
How can you say that?
Because it is. It's specific to this planned development. The definition is tied to this planned development. It is on this schedule of uses. It is not on another schedule of uses for another project. It is tied to this development only.
Thank you.
Now, if another project down the line wants to come in and ask for the same thing, they can do it, they can use this definition, they could provide something different for consideration, or the option that the zoning board would have preferred is that you direct staff to amend the LDC to include a set definition of what this would be. But that's, that's a different discussion, but I just wanted to make sure it was clear that you don't, it's not like this definition and this plan is going to run rampant. These approvals are subject to this project. The other thing to keep in mind is you heard, I think somewhat of a misconception about all the information that had been added since the zoning board hearing. And I do want to clarify exactly what was added to the master concept plan since the zoning board hearing. They added the number of stories, the maximum height of the project was already on there. The number of units incorrectly stated was on there since the beginning. That was always on there. And they added more defined references to where the parking areas are, which are at the driveways on the plant. And like Derek said, the ordinance changes were mainly just the strike through underlying changes that brought back the original language of the ordinance from 2010, and just sort of wrote it out, and striking out what's going away, underlining what's replacing it. So that's the extent of all of the changes, quote unquote, that came since zoning board, adding the number of stories to the existing MCP, clarifying the parking. So that's, those are the changes. And the other thing to keep in mind is you also heard somewhat incorrectly that this has been going on for two years, and that, you know, that this, you know, I think one of the things I would keep in mind is that, yes, the application was submitted several years back. The hearing process just started this past April. So a lot of the changes that occurred before then were designed to occur before them, because that's the process where you're submitting the new information, staff's reviewing it, providing comments. You submit more information, staff reviews it, provide comments. So the hearing process just started in April, so it has not been a two-year hearing process with a bunch of new information being added. That's just not true. I could go on, but I think I'm gonna go ahead and stop there and turn it over to the applicant in case they want to say anything.
Thanks, Mike.
I'll be quick. Again, for the record, Noel Davies, on behalf of the applicant, I'm gonna stand on our evidence and testimony from our presentation. What we tried to do is cover upfront a number of these items that we expected you would hear, so we'll rely on that rather than reasserting that, and be respectful of your time and the rest of your agenda this evening. I don't agree with Mr. Lewis. I don't agree with the testimony that was presented to you. I think there were a number of incorrect statements, incorrect references to code, incorrect interpretations of code, and I would defer to your city expert on that, Mr. Fegan, who you just heard from. Also, for record purposes, I have to formally object to the planning testimony. I don't agree with it, I don't think it's correct, and I'd ask that you rely on the applicant's professional testimony and the city's professional testimony. We do meet your code, we're consistent and compliant with your comprehensive plan. I'm certainly happy to take any questions. This is 10 homes with 10 boat slips. It's a reduction in intensity to what was previously approved for the site. We respectfully request that you rely upon your staff and that you approve this project, and we do appreciate the opportunity to present this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any more?
That's it, you're done. It's council deliberations.
I'm not sure if this question goes to the applicant or to you, Derek, but the term "special injury" was used. Are we entitled to know what that special injury is, or to what that definition is?
So, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna give legal advice to either of the parties who may just choose a challenge decision here, but for the purposes of establishing standing, special injury could be a standing basis for a comprehensive plan consistency challenge, whereas the issues we've also addressed today was who is a party, who is a member of the public. This has been an issue that we've discussed with Mr. Lewis, when there's a case called the Carolinian case, which essentially argues that the members of the public are in a different class as far as participation than the parties, which would be the city and the applicant. Mr. Spain, who's the city's land use council for staff, actually argued that for the members of the public and lost that decision. So, sorry, Brent, but, you know, that, to given situation, there are different entitlements given to different status, and so the parties themselves have a direct impact as a result of the decision. And so, the indirect impact of a neighbor or other interested parties could be nature groups, others, that's the nature of the special injury, to establish that.
Well, as was made clear, I'm one of the people that's not as smart as I thought I was, so I'm asking the question again, if it's defined as special injury, and there's a rebuttal here, I just, are we entitled to know what that is, or to have it defined for us by Mr. Lewis?
Councilman Folic, the best thing I would do is, that is not a determination for you to make, that is a determination for the courts to make based on the record proceedings today.
Had to ask the question. Thank you, Derek.
I'd like to make a motion. Can I make a motion at this time?
Absolutely.
I'd like to make a motion for a continuance of this process. Do I have a second? Okay, I'll make a second motion that we deny this applicant. Do I have a second?
Mr. Mayor, based on staff's report and analysis, I make a motion to approve as conditioned.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Have a good evening. Get your butter wings out. Okay, now let's see if we can get out of here tonight.
Takes us to item nine.
Okay, consent agenda. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comment? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
And Mr. Mayor, I bet you said Ellie did such a great job, she's not here, but thank you, Ellie.
Comment on agenda, on consent agenda, we have none, that wasn't on the agenda.
Yes, it was.
Ellie was on the agenda?
Ellie did three grants.
That takes us to item ten then.
Okay, Attorney's item, you're done. City Attorney, City Manager, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. At this time, we have members of the Barron Collier Corporation available. As you can see, we have a draft letter of approval based on this evening's review of the proposed assemblage, the Imperial 41 Special Assemblage Plan as submitted by Barron Collier. And I also believe Representative Barron Collier have a very brief presentation. She'd like to receive that as well.
Can I make a motion to approve?
Second.
May I clarify that that's what the conditions outlined in the draft letter dated June 5, 2024, attached in the agenda item.
Any other comments? We all had it.
Motion to approve as conditioned, and then proceed and draw up the official recommendations and all that stuff.
Mayor made the motion.
Seconded by Councilmember Carr. Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Okay, City Manager, please.
We have an agenda item prepared for you as a...
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Sorry you missed your baseball game there, Nick.
As a request from council, Community Development has prepared a summary of accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and there is some opportunity to provide direction to staff.
Mayor, there's been a request that we continue that to the next meeting, given the fact that this is, meetings run long, so if John, there's no emergency to this, so...
We can place it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda. Yeah, we can. A motion to approve what he said?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think we need a motion. I think we have direction to place it on to the next agenda.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Burt?
Yes, so thank you, Mayor and Council. As you are way to where the Trust for Public Lands is working on procuring a grant application, I do need to make a correction that it said 20 million in the green sheet, it's 12 million. They are asking for an opportunity to have a non-federal match, so they ask that we provide that opportunity to council to give that direction. At this time, I understand, there is not a match from Lee County. There's a potential for discussion by Collier County on June 11, and I've been informed that the Village of Astero has the ability to provide a match as well at this time, but that, I don't know the specific amount of that, but the discussion has been around what would be this city's intent of providing any local match, so we said we'd bring that up as an option.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would make a recommendation that we vote on $600,000, which would be,
I believe, the, was it 1.2? What is it?
The total non-federal match is 2.4. There was a, there was an ask of one, I think there was a couple of different emails, one was 1.2, but then there was another analysis that had been done that created a distribution based on proportion of match based on the segment amount, and there was an...
All right, so I'm not, my thoughts are, we're the first people to put money in on this, we've been great supporters of it, we're still carrying the water on it, and we're happy to participate, but I think we do it at one quarter, whatever it's gonna be. If there's four municipalities who are involved, two of those are counties, which have significantly larger pocketbooks than us. I think it makes sense that it would be a four-way split between them, and if we're the first ones to come out of the gate with a number, that should start the appropriate message to the rest of them.
Well, Mr. Mayor, oh, Chris, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes. This, we're not spending any money.
Exactly.
All we're, all we're doing is, for purposes of the grant application, coming up with a, along with Astero, would be a, an amount that we would commit, but that's subject to further negotiation. The timing of this is what's important, because this grant application has to be in fairly quickly, and so in order to do that, they need to have this commitment of 2.4. We're not spending the money. In fact, it wouldn't be spent until everything's funded, and that's when the grant kicks in. This is just to move the process along. We'll still have time to work out a split agreement among the four parties. This is just to get the grant application filed.
Well, procedurally, that's, my only issue with that is, they're the, okay, so we're talking. The only thing that I, the only issue I have is Lee County's the head on the application, right?
Well, they've done us a favor by taking the lead, okay? So, you know, let's think about, they're the lead in this whole thing.
Right.
They're carrying the water for that, and we need, you know, the problem is, you've got different meeting dates, different agendas, and all this is not gonna work in terms of getting this grant filed. I'm willing to just say, let's go ahead and say, okay, you can name us, but that we're not actually gonna write a check until the grant would ever be funded, and that could be two, three years. So, we're not really spending any money at this point, we're just trying to get this grant application.
My thing is more from an optical financial accountability standpoint, it should be split appropriately, because so far, as of now, the county has not, though they've agreed to be the lead applicant, they haven't put money in on it. Now there's Collier. We have and Astero has, that's it. So I feel it would be appropriate that everybody ponied up, because everybody's gonna have the effect. But if this, if we're gonna lose the grant over it, fine, but from a principled standpoint, we need to make it known that it's moving forward, it isn't gonna be us bearing the load.
Well, Mr....
City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna ask that, although I do like when you guys have conversational meetings and it's not too formal, Councilman Carr is asking to be recognized for, so I'm trying to just make sure that you guys are being consistent in how you have the communications.
As Chris pointed out, it's not coming out of the bank, it's just a commitment. We've already committed $5 million. Money's fungible. So we do one point, I say, my motion would be to give Arlene the authority to go up to 1.2 million, and to consider, continue to negotiate with the other jurisdictions that are involved, and if Astero does 1.2, we do 1.2, and the county stays out, we still get the grant. It's a 20% match. The grants that we approved earlier at $500,000 is our match to a five, it's 50/50. This is 20/80. I mean, we only do 20%, and we get, 1.2 million gets us 12, I mean, 2.4, 2.4...
12 million.
No, we don't, we, yeah, but we get 12 million, but we only do, so, and then when we get to 5 million, we stop. We shrug, we say, now, somebody else carries the water. And nothing comes out of our bank account. Nothing goes anywhere until they get, honestly, 82 million.
Nigel, please.
Yes, sir. All we're doing is pledging, we've already said $5 million. All we're doing is helping them get the grant moving forward. It's not in addition to the 5 million, it's not even saying we're going to spend that money, because this whole thing is predicated upon raising the entire 81.7 million. We've just said we're willing to commit five to it, so I see no harm whatsoever in moving forward with this.
Yes, Attorney.
I would normally weigh in on something like this, but I think, what I want to just point out is I believe that the difference of opinion here is really based on negotiating strategies to get other participants to contribute. So, Councilman Purdon's saying, we, he's saying, we start low until we get more commitments from others. I think that, I think both are valid considerations, and maybe you might want to do a hybrid somewhere where you're willing to go up to 1.2, conditioned on some of the other parties reaching their percentage match, is there something like that?
I can provide some recommendation, maybe if you go up to 1.2, but no more than the Village of Astero provides, so they're equal partners. And additionally, should Collier County...
There we go, that's fine with me.
Come in. What I'm hearing is that they may come in at the percentage of their length of portion, so they have 1.5 miles, approximately 241,000 is what they've discussed. So if that happens, then the split be done three ways in the interim, so what you'd be authorizing is not more than 1.2 with equal shares as they come in.
All we want is the grant filed. Yes, Chris.
The only thing I was gonna say is that basically Astero and Benita have got the lion, lion, lion share of the trail. The Colliers got something like a million and a half, and county's got a small number too. So I'm, I think we oughta, I don't say we should follow that exactly, but I think we have to recognize that we're, we're gonna get about seven miles and seven and a half somewhere.
But that's sort of saying, Benita, put in, Benita and Astero, put in the electric grid, and we'll put in an outlet, being Collier County. That doesn't, they're gonna benefit. Are they gonna stop at the, at the county line and go back their 1.5 miles back and forth, or are they gonna ride the whole ride? So, and like...
We need 70 million dollars.
But let's start. Once we get started, the trails will take them to, the trails will take care of itself. It'll start the motion.
Well, the city...
That's what it basically said.
Let me have the floor a little while. The city has put away some money for the Imperial Parkway expansion years ago. Oh, we have $6 million set aside. Oh, boom, the county jump in, oh, we underestimated, we need $6 million more. So here, we put $5 million aside aside for this project, nobody else has, and oh, Benita's got 5 million, let's go get it.
Astero has.
Let's go get Benita's money, 'cause if we didn't have it out there, they wouldn't be coming. See? I'll make a motion.
I just, I did.
Or you did.
Yeah. That we, we allow, we give Arlene the authority to go up to 1.2 million, but to continue to try to work on the jurisdictions to get them to contribute their share.
Right.
Is there a second?
Second.
You got all that, Mike?
Yep. I'll take the roll call vote. Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Folic.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
I did have one other item to address on, on the rail, so trails, is that the Burt organization did reach out to staff as well as Councilmember Corey to participate in a visioning session. They have a consultant, actually Burt does, has a consultant to look at some visioning, possibly creating some marketing materials that could produce what a portion of the trail may look like, so that they can go after some additional opportunities for funding. So I did want to give up opportunity for Councilmember Corey to say that there was not a council meeting before then when the invite happened, so he can report back on that, and then should you want further participation, it would be good to have one council member participate, and so they know who the, who their contact is.
Now, that's 35,000, is that our, is our nickel? The council, the consultant?
The consultant?
Who's paying them? Us, too?
It was, it was divided by each entity equally. So that was Lee, Collier, Astero, and Benita.
Equal. It did came up with some money. Good, we just start, yes. Okay, we voted that, what else we got?
Look, I... Yes, I do have some additional information. One, before I get to the Hurricane Ian update, I wanted to advise that yesterday, Lee County utilized their abilities for an emergency burn ban. I did have direct communication with Chief DeWitt today. I did confirm with the city attorney as well that we, we are opted into that emergency, that emergency resolution, so we will provide the appropriate outreach with that as well, letting the folks know, and as well as code enforcement will be a part of that process. So that same burn ban is in effect currently within the city of Benita Springs as well.
Does that take care of controlled burns?
No, there is appropriate exemptions for municipal, actual fireworks displays, state mandated fireworks sales, and state or local government enacted burns are permitted.
Okay, good. Ruin our fireworks.
To continue our update with Hurricane Ian review, we have continued, we have continued resubmitting additional information on the 106 properties, with some of them, we did our third round of submittals Tuesday. The additional information that has been requested has been provided, except for the narrative, some additional standard operating procedures that they've reviewed, where we're creating some updates to, as well as the outreach narrative as well. So, we do have an appointment on Monday with our local FEMA representative, so we will be providing those last documents to them on, on Monday as well.
Okay. Well, let's see, council, who we got to report here? You got anything, Chris?
No, I don't, I just wanted to say the memorial service, it was great, and I've heard a lot of feedback of how much everybody enjoyed it and how touching it was, so it was very nice.
Jesse?
Yes, sir. Real quick, I'm just really excited for our downtown. I want to thank Barron Collier and our staff. This is pretty much the single biggest piece of the Monopoly Board that we had to creating a downtown, and I think it's a pretty historic day for what's, for our city, so I'm glad we were able to get that over the threshold. And then I won't get into huge detail on everything in the meeting, Arlene was there, but some of you may have heard that the Benita Springs Elementary School, there was a parent meeting a couple weeks back, right? And I'm sure you guys have gotten as many calls and communications as Nigel and I have on the issue. I was able to get a meeting with the superintendent and the COO and their construction advisor and...
Chief Engineer.
And the chief engineer. And, and we had, and I think the legal was on as well. Long story short, we explained that there were, there were multiple, multiple things being floated out in the public about what's actually happening and where it's at in the process, and we were trying to get clarity on what the truth is. And essentially, the deal is that they have started the process based on financial evaluations and the condition of the building based on the engineer's report, that would allow them, through the state, to go through the process of taking the school down and then rebuilding a new school. Now, that said, we then explained a lot of reasons why the city would not want that to be the outcome. Now, that said, we then explained a lot of reasons why the city would not want that to be the outcome. I think there were some things in there that they didn't understand or didn't know. And I think it kind, it got left with an agreement. So, essentially, I said, what is it going to cost to do it and keep the historic preservation? As opposed to knocking it down, spend 35 million dollars for a new one? What is the cost to do it and preserve it? Obviously, it's more, but what is it? And the guy's like, well, I don't know and I'm not sure and this and that. And I said, okay, well, we need to know what it costs so we can tell you what the, so we know what the differential is. If it's going to be an extra hundred thousand dollars, if we two times, three times, we need to know what that is. But the idea that you can just say, well, it's going to be expensive, we should probably get rid of it, isn't necessarily the appropriate answer. Because as they're going through all of their schools that need various issues, you know, there are certain things that become policy decisions, like closing a school becomes a policy decision. And the, the issues we know about back from before 2019 when, when the roof went down. So, they have known and they have had a dereliction of duty in regards to the responsibilities of the upkeep of the building that have allowed it to get to where it's at. Upon explaining our, my view on that, they agreed to work with us as a city and do a study that would give us all of the options outlined with pricing on the options to save as much of it as we can and keep, and maintain the historic preservation components of it. So, it's not guaranteeing that they do it or that it's off the chopping block per se. It's guaranteeing that they said, we want to work with you and we will go through this study so we can give you an accurate number. And, and we can actually say, okay, if we do it this way, it's 35 million. If we do it this way and we preserve it, it's going to be this. So, that said, that's, that's the long and the short of the meeting, but my request would be this. I, I feel we should send a letter from the mayor and the council to the school board as a whole and express our interest and our, our, you know, our significant concern over the potential of it coming down and not being historically protected. And, and the integrity of the, of the building and all of the things that need to be done architecturally to maintain that status. So, we would do a nice letter to them and this is, so there was another way you could do it. They're applying for this thing at the state. So, you could have attacked it and we could have wrote a letter to the state being like, hey, we know you guys are considering this, please don't do it. I think that's going a little too far in showing that we want to work with them. And now we're going to say, listen, this is a priority for us. We, we need to know how much it's going to cost and then we can have the appropriate discussion of whether it comes down or not. So, they put in the, they put all of these steps in process. They are yet to be approved. If they were approved, it would still go back to the, it would still go back to the school board now with the appropriate numbers and the appropriate approvals. So, as far as the process goes, it's not dead. And as far as the process goes, they're willing to work with us and they're willing to discuss via a study what our options as a city would be to keep it. So, that's, I mean, that's, that is the high low. If you have questions, I mean, I'll, whatever, and Arlene was there too. John was there as well. So, I mean, if there's other questions, feel free to ask. But I would really ask that you all would agree to send a letter from the mayor over to the school board to kind of show our steadfast support of ensuring that it keeps its historic protections.
Okay. It wasn't too long ago that they called Arlene and asked if they could use a piece of our city property for their staging area, for their parking, so that they could keep the old elementary school. Rather than putting it in the racetrack or whatever.
They did, I told them if we would have known that, we wouldn't have allowed them to do it.
And then here last week, they find out that they're going to tear it down.
I.
You know.
That was the deal. It wouldn't, I said, there's not going to be many red lines in the sand from Benita, but this is going to be one. We haven't had any issues with you since the high school, essentially. So, this is really, this is, this is the oldest building in the city. It's the, one of the only pieces of historic land that we have left. So, if you ever had an issue that you're going to hit a red line with the city, you're looking at it. So, we need to know what it costs like and we need to know what that looks like before anybody tries to put the shovel, shovel in the ground on this.
Figures don't lie, but liars can figure.
So, I don't know if we need a motion, but do we need a motion?
Comment on this.
Okay.
I don't know that we, but one of the things I think.
Just on comment, we're just on comment.
Discussion.
I want to comment on Jesse's comment.
Okay.
Okay. I think one of the things that we need to include in that letter is not only the historical significance of the building and, you know, the cost differential and so forth. But to me, the, the impact on the children. You know, if you were a kindergartner in the 2021 school year and you're now in the fourth grade and those kids have been through a pandemic, they've been through a hurricane. And, and I lived in St. Louis when my kids were in elementary school and they went through the same construction kind of thing. And they would put the kids out in trailers. And, you know, the classes were conducted that way and there wasn't any real sense of school while the new construction was going on. And it's not a good thing for the kids. And I think we need to emphasize that not only do we need to think about the cost, the historical significance, but we need to think about what's going on with these kids because these kids have been through a lot already. So, that's my comment.
Was there, was there going to be a motion?
Yes, so the motion would be.
I'll second.
Okay, great.
I'd like to add that they don't tear down the old school till their new ones built. Don't put them in trailers.
No, because they build it there.
They're going to stay on site. They'll stand, either way, they'll stay on site. The question is, do they smash it and start over with everything new? Or do they try to maintain the first and maybe second building and then add on to it from there? So, that way we keep it, so.
Just so that everybody's aware of this, they had a meeting, it's two weeks ago tomorrow, correct? Neither anybody on council nor staff was ever notified of that meeting. It strictly went to the parents. We found out about it because I started getting texts and emails from people saying, when did you guys decide to tear down the school? What's the rumor? I contacted Arlene the very next morning, on Friday morning. She knew nothing about it. I then contacted a member of the school board, Kathleen Morgan. And she said that the decision had been made. Long story short, I asked through, it's public records, did you all get it? I think Arlene, we have them now, engineering reports, anything that said that was true. School board has had engineering reports since June the 29th, 2020, that the building needed certain repairs just to hang in there. At the point it is right now, the idea that we're going to be able to save the building as it is, read the engineering reports. What we need to do, I think in this letter, is make it very clear to them that we want to, we want to save not only the footprint of the school. What's the point of having a sign up of the brand new school with some bricks? These are the original bricks, the facade, the way the building looks and in my opinion, the footprint inside the, the floor plan of the building, that is something that they could maintain. They're going to have to build a new school because we need more seats, we need more, you know, the classrooms for the kids agreed. But we can't allow them to come back and say, well, we put up a nice picture or we put up some bricks and we're looking at not our, not our elementary school. So, I'm, I'm asking that that letter, Jesse, that it be pretty specific on what we want.
Absolutely.
And as Jesse pointed out, they're neglect.
They're neglect.
Created though.
The engineering reports already show that.
They, at one point, and not, not to, I mean, at one point, they said, and I was shocked and I was like, you can just stop right there because that's never going to happen. They were like, well, and if you guys, you know, feel so seriously about it, you know, maybe the city could have thrown some money to it.
Yeah.
And I'm like, time, I'm like, I'm like, timeout. There's a significant budget for that stuff. And again, there is a process whereby there, somebody over there is looking at evaluations and, you know, what, what, what we're going to address, what we're not going to address based on the budget that they have. And then when it comes to closing a school, specifically one like this, that's a policy decision. That, that isn't something that somebody's like, oh, this makes sense, let's do it.
For the folks that are left out here in the audience, so that you know, we don't own that school, we don't own that land, school board does.
We own the city, you know.
We own the land around it. We own the land around it, but our tax dollars go in there every year. So, just so you all are aware, we're not fighting an uphill battle, but this is not something the city can say, we're going to save the school. No, we're going to the school board to say, you need to save the school that happens to be surrounded by our city.
Did I have a second?
Any motion on that?
I just wanted to clarify, a couple of comments for the letter is, is one, we want to emphasize that we do not want the school relocated. We want it to stay at their current location. The facade as well as the floor plan or footprint of the building. We're asking them to retain or give us information on how we retain the national register, which is, it's, that, that is kept with the state of Florida, Florida master site file. But we want to retain the designation on the Florida, on the national trust for historic preservation. And that we do understand and recognize that we want a state of the art facility for our children there at that location. So, that whatever equipment and things that they need to put in there, that's the expectation that we have as well. Because that, that is, that is what we're hearing on their side is that they need, that we expect that that should be complimentary to, to the other asks that we have. That that can happen simultaneously.
And both. That's a good motion.
There's a motion on, on the floor in a second. I'll take a roll call vote. Councilmember Purdon.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Councilmember, sorry, Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. All right, well, let you go next.
Thank you very much. Well, I received an email from Mr. Zach Smith and it was as if he was reading my mind. Because he said, what about a holiday parade late in December? And, you know, because we don't have any, we start, I think ours is the third or fifth, I don't know what it'll be this year. But I was like, that is so fabulous, why not? So, I would like to have a motion to have staff for budget purposes, prepare and explore the costs of having a holiday parade and having it annually. So, for our budget to have that prepared. Okay, so that's a motion.
Can I see a green sheet?
No. I'm ma, just like, you know, you just made a motion, just like Fred makes, I'm making a motion right now to say, I would like to have budget preparation.
Budget preparation?
We're coming up to budget, so I would like to have a parade added in December, late December, a holiday parade downtown. And it's very complicated and time consuming and really lots of work. So, we need to know if we can afford it, if we can do it and does, do people think it's a good idea?
Does this mean to the special events?
No second.
Yes, I'm the liaison to the special events and they're all in favor of it.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second.
Fred seconded it.
Council, Councilmember Carr.
Aye.
Mayor Steinmeier.
Aye.
Councilmember Corey.
Aye.
Councilmember Fullick.
No.
Deputy Mayor Forbes.
Aye.
Councilmember Bogaz.
No.
Councilmember Purdon.
No.
Motion fails. Okay, you have anything else for us, Sarah?
Well, I do believe during budget, I'd like to see plans to expand, I don't know, for a better word, staff infrastructure. So, if we could at least have that, because I'm going to raise the question, instead of scrambling, could you have an analysis done of what departments are sort of on the brink of getting pushed too far? Because we are expanding, our special events are growing exponentially, just as the city is. And Lee County, Lee County is the fastest growing county in all of Florida. A thousand people a day move into Lee County and it is the most desirable in South, in Southwest Florida. So, I think that staff needs to have some assistance and some help and that we need to start expediting and being more efficient. So, like ways, so not only who needs help, but how to solve it and ways that we can, like streamlining permits. And just to look into who's on the brink of going to where they're going to drop the ball accidentally and then everything, you know, it's a domino effect. So, it could be, especially in an event, it could be catastrophic. So, in, in terms of social. So, just, and I'd like to see that for budgets that we don't have to hold up.
Okay, Fred, you have a comment?
Yeah, I've got, I got a couple of them. Want to compliment Nigel and everybody else having to do with the Memorial Day service. It was the best that I've been to and it started precisely on time and it ended, the bell was ringing, you know, one hour later. Yeah. So, that, and it was very good, the speaker was great. Okay, second thing, I want to make the council aware, I'm not so sure that it's, now, I really should have this thing submitted to Florida League of Cities on lifetime achievement. Now, here's why. Last year, another party won that award from this, our district. The chance that they will allow somebody else from the same district this, one year later to win, they kind of want to pass it around. I can put it together, the points, it'll all be substantiated by staff that these things did occur. If you want me to do it, I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. But I'm, I just want to make you aware, it's, it'll be a nice thing, but I don't, I don't think it's going to lift off through.
Can I clear, I think there was already a motion.
Yes.
To nominate you for the, the award.
I did that already.
Typically, staff prepares the application, you can review it as well, but the signatures comes from the folks who make the motion. So.
We did that already.
We've, we've already done that process. So, are you asking to withdraw? Is that what I'm?
Well, I'm, I'm saying, I think we might want to consider that.
No, no, Fred, just let it go, all right?
That's fine, no, the worst case scenario, you don't get it, but why should we take it back? You deserve to be a, you deserve the recognition and.
I just want to make you aware. Now, the other thing I want to make you aware of, I am an architect, I am an engineer. I went and toured that, the historical building. And, and there are things, now, I'm, I'm in favor of us trying to save it. I think we ought to work with the school board, key word, work with the school board, to see if additional monies can be found to, to restore it. It's probably going to cost double to triple what it would if you built, tore it down and put one building there, including the demolition cost. Because the building is, when you go in, I'm going to tell you some things I didn't know and I don't think you did. I think every one of you would benefit sometime to go on the tour, they'll take you on. Number one, it's got a lot of wood structure that's all rotted out from the years. Now, that's neglect, but it's also, we have to admit, the way it was built at the time it was built, it wasn't built very good. The, it's got crawl space. The wood, the wood floor now does this when you walk in there. It's got a lot of heavy timber lentils across opening, structural.
It's been a long night, we can go into this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just saying, it's, it's going to cost a lot of, I think they should do it, meaning preserve it. I've told them that if they do decide to do that, they've got to have a restoration architect, not a regular architect on that part of the project. And they have to absolutely have restoration contractors because standard contractors can't do it. It's a lot more complicated. The other thing I want to say is, no one that's in charge today, in the staff or in the board, had anything to do with this neglect. We've got same problem that we're facing. Things happened here that now you're on council, you're responsible for things that did or didn't happen in the city before. So, I, I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it. And the guy that convinced me is Matt Feen. He said, it's the most beautiful old building we got. And if it comes down, it's going to take, there, there's nothing to replace it. So, that's, that's a good reason to be in favor of it.
I'd just like Fred to clarify what you just said, Fred, that nobody on the board now was involved in the neglect of the building.
Yeah.
No, he meant us.
Or in charge.
Oh, on the council. On the council, you said.
Well, also, also, the people that are in charge of the board today are not the ones that were there when most of this stuff happened.
We would never let a building go to the, go to the level that this building has gone to.
I would agree with you, Jesse. That's you and I and this. That's you and I and this, this council here. But how did some of our buildings get in the shape they got into? Prior councils didn't look at them. This council, hard fit, so. I think we ought to work together, I think there's a spirit of cooperation.
I don't, I think we should work together, but we're gonna lose. The school board's been on their own planet for, for the beginning of time. They've never had enough money, in the seventy years that I've been on this earth, they've always been begging.
Before I give my real quick, before I give my real quick report, why don't we wait until they respond to our letter?
Exactly.
Then we'll have an idea of where they are and where this current school board and what they intend to do. So, let's just wait till we get the response.
It's a national historic resource.
Yes.
I think it's the only one we have in the city.
So, very quickly, no TDC meetings since our last meeting, so nothing to report there. Lots of emails, et cetera. Our staff is who, and, and the Veterans Committee, so Bobby Hunter and the Veterans Committee and our staff are the ones who did a phenomenal job on Memorial Day. When I was taking General Elder to the airport, he said, I was trying to figure out why you kept focusing on this small-town thing. He said, I actually felt like I was in a small town. He thoroughly enjoyed it, I think he did a great job. I think Jan Farrington is the, the young lady who's also, she'll appreciate me saying young lady, who was the very, very emotional, but very well-spoken last speaker. She's also on our Veterans Committee. But I would like, on behalf of the Veterans Committee, if we could send a letter of thanks to General Elder for coming down here on his Memorial Day weekend, leaving Bess at home alone on Memorial Day weekend, just to help out a friend. And he's glad he did it, but it, that was a big ask.
Absolutely.
So, I would ask the staff to prepare the letter, have you sign it, and Bobby Hunter, maybe myself.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna compliment Matt and Arlene for working with the county. I don't know if you saw in the news press about the fact that Benita Beach is going to be restored, rejuvenated all the way down to the Collier County line, I think that's a big, that's a big deal. They, you know, it's, it's a, again, Benita Springs is the only exit on seventy-five that gives you direct access to the beach. And our beach should be properly maintained, so I think that's a wonderful thing. With respect, just one other thing with respect to Burt's. The arc, the architects and the, that we're using are up on Coconut Road. What happened yesterday was that they developed a working group of leaders for both Estero and Benita Springs that met to talk about specific plans for what the trail could look like. In our areas, it's, was downtown, other areas is like where it crosses the Estero River and so forth. That's all gonna be used for fundraising, but more importantly, they're gonna maintain this complete wall of how that trail looks at the architect's office. And so, I would, you know, if, it's up off Coconut, off Coconut, not Coconut, Corkscrew, Corkscrew Palm, that's where the architect's location is, Arlene can give you the exact address. But I, you know, I would encourage you to take a look at it, to, to have influential people that you know, take a look at it to help get behind this thing, so. Everything's moving along, and a lot of leadership showed up from, from Estero yesterday. That's all I gotta say.
Okay, very good. Next meeting?
No public comment?
Oh, yes, public comment.
We have three registered, and I think there are others. We have to start with Mr. Grant. First one to submit his slip.
Yes.
Come on up in the back.
Okay, Alex Grant, I've given you some more information on the rail situation. This, uh, the trail, uh, the pedestrian, the bike, that's twenty-five feet of right-of-way. There's seventy-five feet of right-of-way left for rail, and I'm gonna discuss that portion of the seventy-five feet left for the rail. The importance of that is, I, I used to be, you know, in the fire department, et cetera, so I'm looking at this as a public safety as well as transportation. Now, the point that I'm going to emphasize here is we have Interstate seventy-five and US forty-one. If you are going to exit this area in, in a storm, that is located in the Tampa Bay area, US forty-one is a half a mile from Tampa Bay, and Interstate seventy-five is one and a half miles from Tampa Bay. In a major hurricane, that area would get flooded. So, the only other thing is that you need that rail line that comes down. This is thirty-one miles from Tampa Bay. So, that gives you another thirty feet, thirty miles, I'm sorry, another thirty miles buffer, right? So, this is a, really a civil defense situation. You have a major storm, we only have, uh, a hundred thou, uh, we have a million people here, let's say in Lee County, you only have, uh, what is it? The, for evacuation purposes, you don't have any more. The county has only a hundred thousand places to put people in during the storm. So, that leaves nine hundred thousand people exposed. So, now, you could have, uh, there's, uh, a rail, uh, Seminole Gulf has the, just on, in Arcadia, they have the, uh, what, a yard there. You could put fifty Amtrak cars there as a reserve to remove, to move people out from this area out to Orlando area in case of a major hurricane that would hit us. So, it's a safety situation. Also, you can use that system for, anyway. The money could be from Amtrak, and they could use the fence in between the trail for, for the bikers and the pedestrians between the railroad track. It's done all over the country, not a problem.
Okay, thanks, Alex.
The next registered speaker is Derek Botana.
Good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank Jesse for addressing the concern of the elementary school. So, a lot about what I wrote is, is kinda out the door. But you, you are definitely addressing the concern, Mr. Nigel, as well. And the, I'm coming before you, as the chairman and president of the Historical Society. There is a tremendous outcry within the community to preserve the school at all costs. Several in the community have actually offered to fundraise privately for the school to save it. So, I'd like to, uh, just bring that notice to you guys. It is the only registered property on the historic register in Benita Springs. And we do have several other properties, but they're not on the register. I also had a tour of inside the school. I have taken courses on historic preser, uh, historic preservation, and the school is not completely lost, it can be saved. But it will cost at least thirty-five million. So, that's something to actually consider, and that's pretty much all I have to say.
Is that what's the addition, thirty-five million?
No, that's for actually preserving building one and two.
I think the school board can afford it.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Ron George? Any others?
Yeah, come on up. Impatient. That's all night.
The last few survivors. It's been a long, heavy meeting, so I'll try and make it quick. Kind of segues into the school, so.
Please state your name.
Zach Smith, sorry about that, Benita resident. I actually live a couple doors down from the school on Dean Street. I own a business in downtown Benita. I actually did my internship at Benita Springs Elementary School before I went into teaching in Collier County for over a decade elementary. I participate in the Fourth of July Parade every year, it's incredible. My only gripe is that it's our only parade, which means all of our schools are left out. Our marching bands don't get to participate. Benita, Benita Mill is an arts school, they don't get to participate. Most of the student electives are out for summer vacations, they don't get to participate. I've talked to Laura Taylor, your city events, many times. I could pursue this as an outside individual, organize the event, come to city council, ask you to approve the permit, shut down the road, do the parade. The optics of a random guy who owns a business in Benita trying to organize a parade for schoolchildren doesn't look great.
Especially a bar.
That's why I'm asking city council to lead the charge on that. Please consider looking at your budget, as I understand you have your budget meetings, consider looking at the budget to add a holiday parade for our city as a community event. I do believe you would make up a good portion of the money, just like the fire department does, by selling admission into the parade. So, you might have an initial upfront investment, but I do believe you would recoup it. I do believe this would be a significant investment for our community, so I, I ask that you please consider it during your budget meetings. That's all, thank you for the long meeting, have a good night.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next meeting, uh, be Wednesday, uh, the nineteenth of June, twenty?
July, July, July.
No, June?
The hell, you got the wrong month?
Well, we're skipping the, the one meeting in July, though.
July third is what it is.
Yeah.
Okay, well, anyways, we have a meeting next, in two weeks, so we're adjourned, thank you.